With inflation, so you know, it just, the work continues. Our county council, you know, had the biggest budget presented to us in the history of Kauai County. But you know, there's still roads that need to be fixed, bridges need to be fixed, park facilities that, you know, need to be fixed that have not been touched. So there's a lot of work ahead and, you know, it's very important as a county council member that, you know, we, we fight and we make sure that the checks and balances are in place against America, make sure that, you know, they're, they're not just sitting there doing nothing, that there, there's accountability and I'm not afraid to, you know, address problems, issues raised by residents. Email me, call me, you have a problem that's legitimate, I, I tackle it and I don't, I don't walk away from it, but I just wanna let you know, I'm, you know, running for reelection. I need your help. Last time I lost, luckily my current county council appointed me to Luke Evans's seat and I'm, I'm back here again, so hopefully this time I can win legitimately. Thank you.
Thank you, Ross Kagawa. Now we'll have some long answer questions. Candidates will have two minutes to respond to the questions they are asked. We are going to start with this foundational question that will begin at Ross Kagawa and work its way down the panel, if you will. Okay? A common response from Kauai officials on social and economic issues is that they are state-level problems, not the counties. What is your philosophy on the role of county government? Which issues should the county take on and how should it collaborate with the state or federal government and community partners on matters like housing, childcare, healthcare, and other social issues?
Well, you know, for me, I think our, our main focus for the county is public safety, infrastructure, you know, things like sewers, water, landfill, solid waste. You know, there's many issues that we have on our plate and a lot of them have been just overlooked, they've been patched, like a sewer line, water line breaks, what did they, what do they do typically? They go in there, they patch it, they cover, cover it back and then a little while later, a little down the road, they're digging it up again. I think, you know, the failure of county government over the years to address it, as though, if you were a homeowner, would you fix a problem like that? No, right? You would change the whole entire line, knowing that it's, you know, a hundred years old or seven years old or whatever, it may be, if it's cast iron, right, it's gonna rot. But I think it's those problems that have been, you know, patchwork for many years and now we're looking at how do we find affordable housing? Well, if you don't have the basic sewers, water available, how are we gonna get a thousand houses when there's a nine thousand dollar gap in how much homes we need on Kauai now to meet the need? You know, there's nine thousand needed and you gotta go one permit at a time to the water department or sewer department, they're gonna tell you if you can, if you can have your sewer line or have your water line, that's ridiculous. We should know in advance how many, whether it be liuui you can have, we have available for one thousand or five hundred or whatever it is, you know, we should have those numbers, but, you know, those numbers are, again, not available because we're too busy fixing old problems, our current, if we don't fix our current, we get fined by the state. You know, so those are the kind of issues we're facing and millions of dollars, we, we can't even look at expansion until we fix those problems, which is frustrating and we need, you know, guys on the council to really move things in a different direction.
Thank you, Ross. Would you like me to repeat the question or do you recall what it is? Mel Reposo? Yeah, across the board.
Oh, okay, well, you know, it's kinda, kinda similar to what Ross said. I think county is responsible for obviously public health and safety, I think that's it. Infrastructure is, is always important and I think Ross hit the nail on the head, we, we are behind, I mean, I think just water, sewer, our landfill, we're, we're in a crisis right now. And obviously the county cannot do it alone and we have to work with our state partners and our federal partners. I, I think as far as the county council, you know, people, we are a legislative body, so we make laws, yes, we pass the budget, but the administrative function lies with the, with the mayor, much like in the state level, the administrative executive action comes from the governor and the legislature, make sure he provides, or they provide the resources needed to get the job done. So as it relates to our county council, I think it's imperative that the, the council works together with the administration at all levels because they are, we are behind the eight ball, we are. And again, like Ross said, if we, we, we were committing to building all these homes, but we're not gonna build, be able to build anything if we don't have a landfill, we're not gonna be able to build anything if we don't have water, we're not gonna be able to build anything if we don't have wastewater in place. And this is where we, as the county council, we need to, to make sure our relationships at the state level, a lot of these questions that we got here were really, should be directed to the state legislature, but we are the voice of our people here and we are the conduit to get the concerns and the needs to the state legislature and that I believe is the function of the county council.
Thank you. Butch?
Do you guys wanna hear the question again?
Would you like to? Okay, great.
Yeah, I thought so.
Good, good. I wasn't sure how many people we could get through. Okay, a common response for Kauai officials on social and economic issues is that they are state-level problems, not the counties. What is your philosophy on the role of county government? What, excuse me, which issues should the county take on and how should it collaborate with the state or federal government and community partners on matters like housing, childcare, healthcare, and other social issues?
Okay, as a, as a county firefighter for twenty-plus years and as a state DOE teacher, I mean, I, I can definitely speak to this. Most of the rescues that are being done on this island are on state land, all the beaches, Nepali, Kalalau, state highways, but you guys are paying for it, you guys are footing the bill. And there's also, as far as like federal, state and county goes, I think the role of county council is to look at the whole system, like we have the highest total, the highest total tax burden in the whole country, Hawaii does, we are number one in total tax burden. Like we all feel that, our paychecks show it. If you're making forty-eight thousand a year, you're at eight point two-five percent in the state of Hawaii, there's no other state that's that high. And if you don't understand that and you don't know what, how that affects people, how can you pass a county surcharge of point five percent? How can you add another fee, right? You gotta look at, you're at a twenty-two percent federal margin rate, you're at eight point two-five, you're at over thirty percent of your paycheck and you haven't even got your safety check, your registration, all these things that we, here's my point, it's like a duplication of effort here, right? We've got county roads, there's a whole crew of guys doing county roads, there's a whole crew of guys doing state roads. So when the state gave the county the po, the power to do property taxes, I don't know if it was the eighties or nineties, it's, they're just collect, they're just collecting a lot of money, it's just tax and spin, taxes spin. And I think the big reason people have to leave here is because they just don't take home any money, right? It's expensive here, but you're paying more taxes than any other state, any other state in the nation. We're paying, but, but what are we getting? We're hearing that, okay, parks need this, roads need this, landfill needs that, how are all these other places doing it and paying less taxes than us? So we need that relationship from federal, state, and county, so.
Thank you, thank you. Arrow, you feel confident? You want me to repeat it again?
I'll just make up my answer.
Okay.
I'm confident, yeah.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Yeah, so when it comes to county, state, and federal responsibility, I guess I'll just share my philosophy. My priority is gonna be county's core responsibilities first and foremost. I would love to say, oh, we'll take on all these responsibilities, but at the end of the day, our money is taxpayer dollars and I'm not gonna spend it unwisely, I'm not gonna take on responsibilities that, I mean, is too big for us to handle or maybe we start spending too much money on these other responsibilities when we don't have enough money for our core responsibilities. So, you know, for me, we're always gonna concentrate on our core responsibilities first, public safety, our roads, our county facilities. It's not to say that the county's not gonna take on responsibility that the state's supposed to have to help the island. Housing is actually a state responsibility, but the county created their own housing department and we're taking on housing ourselves because we know how critical it is. So, you know, there are instances where the county says, this, this is so important that we need to spend some of our money on it and so you'll see us take on some of this responsibility. For me though, ultimately it's, we, we, we do our core responsibilities first, infrastructure, whatever we have to do, and if there's a chance, then we may go and take on a responsibility from the state because I'm, I, I know, one of the things they wanted us to take on before was EMS. So right now, emergency management services, the ambulance that drives around, we don't have to pay anything, the residents get service. I know the state has been trying to get us to do it. I know as soon as we say we'll take on that responsibility, even if the state says we'll pay the first few years, we'll pay the next few years, eventually down the road, they're gonna say, that's your guys' responsibility, you guys pay for it. So we always have to be very cognizant on those type of situations and, you know, for me, I was the budget and finance chair for eight years and those are the stuff that I'm always, I always concentrate very hard on, you know, getting the biggest bang for the buck for our county residents.
Thank you. Moving forward to Fern Anuenui Holland to answer the question, would you like me to repeat it?
I think I got it.
You got it.
Yeah, so, you know, like Arrow said, we do have core responsibilities that are very important that we follow through on, obviously that includes a lot of the things that have already been mentioned. One of the real big issues that is pressing is our landfill and solid waste issue, which we're running out of time on and is our responsibility, and infrastructure needs that are really falling in our, in our bucket. Absolutely, you know, our job is to be that check and balance with the budget, to manage the police and the fire and the lifeguards and all these really important services, make sure your trash is picked up, all of these things that are real core responsibilities. But I do think that anything that the community comes to us about and anything that is a concern to the community is stuff that in our role as a council member, we can use to facilitate those conversations, to get the right people at the table and to come up with solutions for. And so I think, you know, always putting that work first and working together to ensure that we can, you know, figure out solutions for issues that sometimes don't land directly in our, in our wheelhouse, but like Boz mentioned, affordable housing, you know, it's a critical need in our community, we need all hands on deck, all levels of government on deck to kind of figure out solutions together. And so I will always advocate for working together with our state representatives and I do that, I keep a relationship and try to continue that work wherever I can, even not in office, because it's so important that the different levels of government do work together. So definitely, I think one of the big roles that we play, even for things that may not particularly be in our wheelhouse, such as childcare and healthcare, like mentioned in the question, I think is really it's trying to drive that funding in for where we can support those programs. And so one core responsibility of ours is to go out and help find the funding and partner with the nonprofits and the organizations that are really driving a lot of this work forward because government can't do everything. So absolutely, I think we have core responsibilities, but I do think that all issues that are facing our community, especially those that are really impacting us, matter and we need to address.
Thank you, Fern. And Bernard.
Okay, Aloha. Just to answer the question, overall, for me, with my experience, the biggest part, whether it be infrastructure, landfill, housing, is relationships and building strong partnerships from Washington DC at the federal level, to the state level, to the county level, that's been my experience. To me, we can only do so much at the county council level and we do a lot, the legislative branch, we do a lot, we make the connections. I've been at the administrative level, but I'm saying that as a team, we need to reach out, go out to, like I said, Washington DC, connect the dots, make sure if it's housing, what type of housing, what infrastructure funding we would need, where we would need to put it, how do we assure that we get the resources before we can start? And that's a big part, developing strong partnerships and relationships at the different government levels and reaping the benefits of the resources that come from that. To me, I've had the experience where we're building different housing projects on the island and then again, seeing how can we, like the Tiger Grant right here for the development of our liuui town core took partnership, we only could do so much at the county level, but at the state and federal level, we're able to secure funding as an example, which added more and more and more. So I don't wanna sound repetitive, but I will, because it's important that we understand the process and what everybody's roles are, but at the same time, as a team, connecting everything and bringing it home, whether it be childcare, home, whatever, you know, housing, like I said, kupuna programs, I mean, we can go from in-house projects and programs to outdoor programs to just in general, the entire island. So I think we have a good, good opportunity to make that connection and reap the benefits and bring the resources back home.
Thank you, thank you. All right, we are gonna move forward into the next question. Three candidates out of the collection of six are gonna answer this question and then we will switch, okay? So starting first, it'll be Arrow Conachiro to answer this question. Childcare is essential for both child development and a thriving local economy. In two thousand twenty-three, Hawaii was ranked the second most expensive state for childcare. Should the county increase support for affordable, quality childcare? If so, what specific measures will you take to ensure this happens?
Okay, childcare, I guess I can attest to high cost of childcare because I just recently had two kids in preschool. Thank goodness my five-year-old went to kindergarten, so now I only have one, one kid in preschool. But as a county, you know, we can do our part, but we're not capable of providing childcare for everybody on the island, I mean, that's the, that's the reality of it. I think just coming out of COVID, everyone realized how important childcare was because everyone was having a hard time finding employees, a lot of working families were staying home with their kids. And so at that time, I remember allocating, the county allocated money from the federal government, it was American Rescue Plan Act money, ARPA, to do a childcare facility at the county and I believe they just broke ground on it recently, like within the last month or two. That location is in the old Big Save Building at the county and so that is gonna be a childcare facility. I don't know the exact details on it, if it's only for county workers or if it's for expanded people around in liuui or, or where, but the county did take that step into childcare, which really isn't the county's responsibility, but I, I believe after COVID, we really saw how important it was because a lot of people were having a difficult time getting to work because their kids had nobody there to watch them, they maybe weren't in preschool or even if they're in preschool, a lot of times the kids get sick during COVID and the kids had to stay home like four or five days, so who's gonna stay home with the kids? So that was a big problem. Additionally, you know, when you look at the state, the state has pushed, has pushed an act where they are looking to do, provide preschool for all by two thousand thirty-two. You know, right now they provide elementary schools, right now they provide high school, they are looking to provide preschool. Whether they can get that done by two thousand thirty-two is yet to, yet to be seen, but if they are able to accomplish that, I think it'll be a great thing for everybody.
Thank you. The second candidate to answer this question is going to be Ross Kagawa.
Thank you. Again, like Arrow, you know, I directly affected my two, two granddaughters, ages four and three, both attend liuui honganji preschool and, you know, I just wanna compliment that school, I think that school is like the best I've ever seen. They, they do a tremendous job with the children there and I just seen, you know, my grandchildren grow, but, you know, not everyone gets in, there's a, there's a cut, they only admit, I think, twenty-five per class and, you know, so if you don't make the cut, then there's no option, right? I mean, and there's some options that are really expensive, like up to twelve hundred fifty, I think, a month, so, you know, it's really a, a large chunk. My other grandchild, age one, goes to a babysitter and, you know, so that has a cost as well. So, you know, anything that the federal government or the state government can do, whether it be through tax credits, whether it be through providing school for all those of preschool age, I think would be a tremendous benefit. Whether they can find enough qualified teachers to run it is another question. So I think it's something that if the state is really committed to, you know, they need to incentivize it and pay them so that we do have enough teachers to, to do that classes. I mean, I would come out of retirement and, and help teach to, to make it work if I had to, but, you know, again, it's, it's gotta be worth it for, for retired teachers, for other teachers to come out of retirement and do it, you know, I was teaching for twenty-three years, it's for the, for the pay that the DOE pays, it's, some, some call it blood money because, you know, it really, when you compare to other professions, teachers are highly underpaid in Hawaii and, you know, the, the ones who don't do it will say, well, you got the summers off. Let me tell you, the summers off is not worth the, the low pay that they have.
Thank you. And last to answer this question is Bernard Carvalho.
Happy to answer this question because I do have like six grandbabies and four of them are like four, two four-year-olds, three-year-old and one six months. But my point is that as Papa and Nana, you know, we try to do what we can at home, we do our Sunday meetings and who can watch who in what time and throughout the week, but at the same time, there's the Open Doors program, the scholarship program, I mean, a lot of people have come to see what kind of options we currently have that can help our parents actually receive additional funding or tuition waivers maybe, okay? So that's one thing. I kamalee, my grandson Roland goes I kamalee right here, so that's another opportunity there that help with our, our grandson going to I kamalee school. My son and my daughter-in-law worked that out, my, my son actually went there when he was a baby or young at that age. And then Kapalimentri School, my other grandson Cadelo goes to Kapalimentri School preschool, just brand-new program within the public school that is happening right now and my grandson goes there. So there's another op, I'm just sharing some of the options that is actually happening right now. And then Li, Li Okalani Children's Center with my little grandbaby Aria, she goes to the Peace Program and then, but mom has to go with her because she's so young. But my point is, we currently have programs in place that can help at different levels, income levels, sometimes free, however it works, that is currently in place that I'm speaking about. But chaka in general is a very, very important part in our community and we continue to do whatever we can to provide, to support whatever different levels within our community. But I share those four areas and of course, the big picture Boys and Girls Club, that's a whole other part, but just knowing that there's opportunities there for our young ones, our young babies growing and getting them into the school structure is very important until, as, as they grow older, so just wanted to share that, mom.
Thank you, thank you. Moving into question number two, again, three of the candidates will answer this question, two minutes allotted to each individual. Despite some progress, gender inequities, excuse me, yeah, inequities or faith in Kauai County's workforce, there are currently no active women firefighters and at the Kauai Police Department, only eleven of the eighty-five patrol officers are women. There are no female detectives or women in leadership positions above the rank of lieutenant. Fern will be the first candidate to answer this question. What concrete steps will you take to ensure fair opportunities and advancement for women in these departments and in leadership positions across the county?
Thank you. So I understand greatly what it's like to feel like you're in a man's world. I very much understand how it can feel daunting, I think almost, for some of these roles and positions and that we kind of go up against what has largely for a very long time been a very patriarchal system. I will do whatever I can to encourage, you know, paying fair wages and encouraging women to join these forces and hopefully if I am elected, I can be a face of inspiration for other women to try to seek and be involved in political positions and more of these roles. I think providing things and supporting things like childcare, supporting family programs that allow for women to have the opportunity to work in positions that they might not normally be able to do, I think is also an important thing we can do to support it. I really need to better understand, you know, what people are saying the, the boundaries are outside of that because I think that there's possible ways that we could provide incentives and encouragement for women to feel like they can rise up into these positions and take them on. But yeah, I very much understand that these positions can feel like they're sometimes out of reach for women, so.
Thank you. Moving next would be Butch to answer this question.
Okay, I worked with three male firefighters, three female firefighters on this island. Worked with Karen Denai, worked with Melissa Hall, she came in the fire department same time as me, two thousand and one, and Maureen Higa, she retired, Kala Hill Fire Station. So women can be firefighters, that's, that's not the issue. I coached, I coached girls soccer, pretty much, well, I don't know, ten, ten-plus years. And I used to tell people I, I didn't coach soccer, I told them I coached self-confidence because I believed it's just, girls are just, I just needed to basically just tell them they were, they were capable and they would try all the moves that all the boys were already trying, right? The three-sixties and trying to do all kinds of fancy moves, the girls, they just had to believe they could do it. So I do have daughters, they're both in college right now. One wants to be a dermatologist slash chemical engineer slash business, I don't know, it depends what day of the week it is. The other one wants to be an attorney, so I don't believe there's boundaries. I will say this though, World Health Organization just classified firefighting as a carcinogenic, class-one carcinogenic. So I do want people to think about that when you go into that career. Firefighting is a class-one carcinogenic. Cancer is seventy-four percent now for firefighters. Used to be, you didn't even hear about it, it was heart attacks, it's, it's cancer. So I have no problems with women going into firefighting, I've worked with them, there's a lot of female firefighters on Oahu that I'm good friends with, I've worked in, on military bases with them as hoist operators and medevac helicopters. It, it's not whether they can do the job or not, it's just, I don't know, I just wanna mention that about the cancer, it's a, it's a serious risk to consider if you wanna be a firefighter, it's not whether you're male or female, it's whether are you willing to take that risk.
Thank you. And last to answer this question will be Mel Reposo.
Yeah, you know, we've come a long way, I mean, when I was in the police department, I think there were two women and there were occasions where there were none, I've worked with women, police officers, they, there is, like I think what Butch said, there's no boundaries, you know, I think the, the real question is their interest, I think police, fire, they traditionally have been male-dominated occupations and, and I don't, I don't think that prevents any females from applying and, and getting hired. You know, gender equality is interesting because at council services, we got three males and, I don't know, thirty females. You know, we hire the people that are qualified and competent to do the job and I think that's, that's what we need to do. But I, I, I agree with Butch, I don't think there's any limitations whether you're male or female, that, you know, at the council level, like I said, we're legislative and, you know, this budget, the current budget, we approved a significant amount of money for KPD to hire a professional marketing firm, so they're doing professional videos and, you know, on every council that I've ever served on, we've never denied any department, any funds or any budget to promote the, the recruiting and retention of their employees and I, and I think that's the council's function. We don't get involved with the day-to-day, we don't get involved with the, the hiring and firing, but I can honestly say that for every council that I've served on, we've supported all the departments and can we do more? I think we, we could, I think if the departments wanted to, they could target the marketing for specific groups of people, but again, it comes down to who's, who's willing and able to do the job. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, ladies and gentlemen, so what we're gonna do is we're gonna do some rapid-fire questions, make sure you guys didn't fall asleep yet. Okay, so now we'll have two rapid-fire questions for all candidates that will respond and please limit your response to three sentences. It is gonna go Butch, Mel, Ross, Bernard, Fern, Errol. That's the order, okay? Three sentences, choose your words wisely. Butch, Mel, Ross, Bernard, Fern, Errol. Yes? Everyone got it? Okay, 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 three sentences, be counting out there. Here we go. How can the county council take action to alleviate the high cost of living for local families on Kauai? Go ahead, three sentences.
Notice she didn't give a time limit, right?
Three sentences.
Okay. Can you repeat the question?
Yes, of course. Of course I can, okay. I know you guys are all thinking too, you guys are thinking of your sentences. Okay, how can the county council take action to alleviate the high cost of living for local families on Kauai?
Reduce taxes. Property taxes. Fees. If you want childcare, you need to look at the things that are important, how can you afford childcare if you're not taking any money home?
That's it. Mel, same question, three sentences.
Yeah, I, I think re, reassessing every year and looking at areas where we can be more efficient and, and I think property taxes is a, is a good example.
Yeah, that was like two, you have any, okay, great, perfect.
Yeah, it's gonna be rough.
I know. Okay, Ross, three sentences.
Definitely like Butch said, cutting property taxes for local residents that Hawaii, Kauai is their home. Second, eliminate government waste, you know, find areas where we're wasting money and, you know, eliminate them.
Great. Bernard?
Make sure that we secure whatever resources we can, I'm gonna say that.
Make sure that we secure whatever resources we can, I'm gonna say that again, to secure, to make, assure that we can provide whatever we need to do to support that overall.
Great. Fern?
Absolutely affordable, making housing affordable, including the taxes. Definitely sewer and addressing the cost of transitioning to septic that so many families are struggling with. And I think supporting small business would be the core thing that we can do.
Definitely supporting housing projects geared towards workforce housing. We have a lot of low-income housing. But the housing that we need to be supporting in the future is housing where families don't qualify for low-income housing but cannot afford one houses in excess of a million dollars.
There we go, three sentences. Check it out, good job, are you guys counting? Just making sure, good job. All right, we got one more rapid-fire question. We are going to start with Ross and go all the way, let's see what's my order. Ross, Mel, Butch, Errol, Fern, Bernard. What is Butch's? Kea hi olalo. Yeah, we've been practicing, okay. Here we go, serious, this is serious business. Ross. What three measures would you recommend the county council consider to improve the lives of women and girls in our community? Three sentences, go.
Well, again, you know, reduce property taxes so families have more money to spend on their children and their girls for, you know, extracurricular activities such as sports or arts or, you know, dance.
Okay, great. Mel?
I mean, it's reassessing. You know, I think we, targeting our employment practices, our hiring practice for women, I think that's number one. Thanks to, I think, Addison Bulisan, Councilmember Bulisan, I know he was here. We, we put in feminine products in all of our restaurants. I mean, these are simple things, you have difficult questions.
I know, yeah, three sentences.
And...
That's it?
Yeah.
All right, Butch.
Easy question.
Okay.
Safe spaces for women. I want you to ask yourself, do you feel safe walking around the neighborhood? Are there enough lights? Are there enough streetlights? Do you have to go to the Kauai path to walk safely? Women and children, especially girls, should feel safe walking around their neighborhoods or going on hikes by themselves.
Thank you, thank you, great. Errol Gonashiro, three measures.
I would say maintaining our parks and facilities, sports and allowing girls to go out and have a safe area to play around. My girls use Kalana Park all the time.
Yep, that was three. Fern?
Absolutely, safety across the board. I think support for women in need and those that are dealing with domestic abuse or just issues that need support. And I think childcare, after-school programs and sports, those kind of collective things that we can help provide for women who oftentimes are helping their children.
Thank you.
And again, I'm gonna repeat, safe spaces overall in our community. I mean, to me, from my little granddaughters all the way up, you know, and working closely with our, our women groups and organizations to provide the support there.
Thank you. Pretty good, huh? All right. Moving into our next longer-answer question that we have for this evening. Fern will be the first candidate to answer this question. And then we'll go Errol and Ross. In May, it was reported that the median home price in Hawaii has increased by 350% over the last 20 years. This is cited in Kauai Now News of 2024. Each year, an estimated 15,000 konaka o'iwi leave the state for the US continent, as reported by CBS in 2023, often due to the skyrocketing cost of housing. If elected, what specific steps will you take to ensure more affordable housing is available in our community? Demonstrate your understanding of the root causes of this crisis and how your policies will provide meaningful relief.
Thank you. So I absolutely understand this to be basically the biggest issue our county is facing. So many people are being forced to leave. There's more Hawaiians living overseas than there are here in Hawaii. We have a serious problem. I think that we have to approach this issue every way that we can. We need to continue to support the increase in supply, continue to, like Errol mentioned, the workforce, that middle-range housing, as well as the truly affordable low-income housing. We need to be supporting across the board the opportunity to provide those kind of units. We see, you know, Limaola moving forward, Waimea 400 is starting, Honolulu 600. There's amazing programs that are starting to see this housing increase and we need to continue to support those. I think drawing down taxes for residents and long-term rentals is another really important thing we can continue to do. We've done a really good job at going after the illegal transient vacation rentals. I think continuing to put the pressure on, to push things into long-term affordable rentals is also a key to providing that housing solution. In addition to all of these different ways that we need to continue to increase supply and encourage long-term rentals, we need to move forward with allowing people to build their ADUs and their additional units that they've been approved for. And a lot of that has to do with a failure in infrastructure. And so we absolutely need to be addressing the infrastructure needs, sewer wastewater treatment particularly, and those things that'll allow us to, for people to be able to move forward. I mentioned the transition to septic before, but that's a very big cost limitation for people. And in addition to all of that, we also need to be addressing the affordable, the houseless community in a whole other manner of providing solutions for housing first, like we're seeing happening with those assisted opportunities and maybe even immediate safe spaces for some of the houseless families that are living with children in their car and things like that.
Thank you. Errol, the question is to you.
Okay, I can say, you know, I've afforded, I've supported affordable housing in the past and will continue to do so. If you look at the island, we do have a lot of low-income housing that's going up or has gone up. If you start working from the west side, you have Waimea, Huaqai. You have Port Allen, you have Limaola in LAL, you have Kauai in Koloa. As you get to Lihui, they recently did the, I think it's called Ulukoh Homes. We also did Kealaula in the last few years, which was actually a housing project that was the first of its kind. Kealaula was a project that took, that provided small houses, that provided housing for families that were homeless. Typically, we didn't have projects specifically for homeless. That project was specifically for homeless. And that project is gonna be copied in Limaola. We also have a big project that's coming across Taco Bell, which is market development. Those are all low-income housing. So for me, as I mentioned earlier, we have a lot of low-income housing. We need to do workforce housing, we need to provide that next level so people in the low-income housing can move into the workforce housing. People homeless can move into Kealaula, Kealaula can move into low-income and kind of start that. Right now, there's a, there's a gap. There's no housing that anyone in the workforce can move into right now. And we have the opportunity to do that. We purchased 400 acres in Waimea, we purchased another 50 acres in Kilauea. And those are areas where the county is gonna have to say, you know what? We're not gonna go for low, low-income housing, we're gonna go for workforce housing. And I think that's where our concentration is gonna be. You look at housing around the island, it's, our housing crisis is an infrastructure crisis. You know, there's areas that you can put a house but can't get water. There's areas you can put a house, we can't get sewer. And so we're really gonna have to concentrate on, you know, how we spend our tax dollars moving forward. Because the infrastructure costs are very huge costs. And we're gonna need to be really mindful on how we spend that and where we're moving and where we're moving to, so.
Thank you. And last to answer this question will be Ross.
Thank you, yeah. You know, it's, our housing problem is, you know, was spoken at the Vice President debate last night. And it's basic economics, we have a supply and demand problem. We don't, we don't have the supply to meet the demand. And that is driving up costs here, we're having bidding wars on old fixture operators that are selling for a million dollars. You know, not only in Lihui, you know, in Kekaha, you have, I think, 6,000 square foot lots are going like for 800 to a million. And these are old fixture operators out in Kekaha where the values used to be really low. But there's, there's a lot of demand for homes on Kauai, not only from people that live here on Kauai, but, you know, people from the mainland that wanna move here. And there's no laws that can prevent, you know, somebody from the mainland bidding for the same house. So what we need is, like was spoken at the Vice President potential debate, was we, we need a massive influx of homes, like for Errol said, for work-class people who don't qualify for affordable homes. We have enough affordable homes going up, every house is being filled in those categories. Those are met because of tax credits that, you know, developers are taking advantage of and they're building those. We need more affordable, more market lots, like Honolulu made by D.H. Horton. People thought there was no way people were gonna buy those houses for 850,000. But you drive around that subdivision, you look around, it's all local people mostly that live there. So it, even if 850 is the market and you say, crazy, how are our kids gonna buy that? But at least that's better than 1.2 million. But we need, you know, again, if you get more supply, it's gonna meet the demand, it's gonna drive prices down. And unless we do more projects like that Honolulu project that is just for market people, then, you know, we won't see the, the housing prices go down significantly.
Thank you. Moving into the next question, it will start with Bernard, Butch, then Mel. According to the Health Resources and Services Administration, Hawaii is designated as a health professional shortage, excuse me, as a health professional shortage area. That's a tongue twister. Only 14.2% of the mental health care need has been met as of September 2021. If elected, what concrete steps will you take to ensure the mental health of our community is addressed? What can the county do to ensure individuals seeking substance abuse treatment are also accessed to the care that they need?
I think the biggest thing right now that is actually happening is the Adolescent Drugs Treatment Center. And I've been working prior, prior hat on securing the location, working closely with the department, with various departments, of course, working with Grow Farm. But the Adolescent Drug and Healing Center was a place for all to bring our teens or youth who are experiencing these kinds of issues in their lives along with their families. It wasn't just them alone. So they would actually heal at the facility, but they would also heal with the land. There was a whole program in place. And I, I know it's moving forward. And so the Adolescent Drug Healing Center located right centrally is a big, big part of addressing this issue. A lot of our kids are going through some ups and downs and different issues within their lives right now, within their families. And we need some positive energy, positive feedback, positive programs that can continue to provide that. And this is just one example with the Adolescent Drug and Healing Center that can continue to provide whatever support and services. As we continue to work with various groups and organizations, whether it be the different clubs and organizations provide support for any of our youth that are experiencing these challenging times in their lives and the families, it's not only them. We gotta work closely with providing additional support and resources. But at the same time, knowing that we have this resource coming our way. And I feel really happy for the community that we're moving forward in this particular area. And again, we've, various sports organizations too are very at the forefront in trying to help and provide support there as well. But I think with the Adolescent Drug Healing Center, which is not the facilities of only, but with the land part, it's just another opportunity there to continue to work forward. As a council member, I look forward to looking more options that we are providing resources and funding that can actually open the door for more opportunities to come.
Thank you. Butch?
My sister Leilani, she doesn't live here, she lives on, she lives in Texas. But she's been homeless, she's been in and out of jail, she's been in and out of halfway houses. Don't really know who's cashing her social security check week to week. It's, it's a struggle with the, with drug abuse and going through abuse in her own life. I mean, everybody's got their own story. I would support any programs, county-level, nonprofits. It, it takes a lot of people, I mean, even like an entire family sometimes can't even help like one of their own family members. It can be very, very difficult. So I would support any, any programs that identify even like, you know, kids, you know, youth. Like we've already talked about, after-school programs and childcare, like, these things can start at such an early age. So early identification, any kids with mental health issues, programs for them. There's some amazing nonprofit, there's some amazing programs out there already for kids and young adults. There's not a lot of kids here in their 20s. You look around, the workforce, you know, they can't afford to live here, there's not a lot of, you know, grand, my, my parents just retired and moved to Alabama, they can't afford to live here. So, yeah, I would, I would support any programs for mental health services.
Thank you. And last will be Mel Reposo.
Well, I think it's no secret that mental health, you know, is relatively non-existent here. That's the sad reality. And it's non-existent in Texas, it's non-existent in Oregon, places that I visit regularly. And it's sad, it's a national crisis, it's not a Kauai crisis. And, and how do we resolve that? I can tell you, we go to DC, some of us twice a year, and we lobby hard. And that is one of the issues that we focus on when we meet with our congressional delegation and other members of Congress, because there is no help. I mean, it's, it's not acceptable for a parent or a sibling or a, a, a mom or dad or to call for help and be told, sorry, there's a waiting list. How can there be a waiting list for mental health? I get emotional about this because it's wrong and we lose so many people unnecessarily. Butch, thank you for sharing that story. It's hard to, hard to talk about your, your family like that, but that's the reality. And, and we, we send tons of money away to foreign countries for help at the national level. And we cannot help our own kupuna that's suffering from mental illness, our keiki, our people that are struggling, and, and it's not all drug addiction, it's mental illness. And it's, it's not something the county will solve, there's no way we can do it. But we gotta, we gotta make that point, we gotta make that argument at Congress and at the state level. We gotta improve our mental health services in our state. And we cannot do it alone. So, yeah, we, we gotta beat the drum loud and, and clear. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving into the next question, it will start with Ross, then Errol and Butch. In 2022, the average age of sex trafficking in Kauai was 19 years old, with 43% of victims being konaka o'iwi and konaka ma'uli girls and women. Do you think trafficking is a serious issue on Kauai? As a county council member, what role can you play to prevent sex trafficking and support its victims? Yes, Ross?
Yeah, so, you know, currently, having been informed by prosecuting attorneys or Kauai Police Department that they need help to address this problem. So, you know, therefore, I'm not sure, you know, how, how bad it is on Kauai. And, you know, maybe if you're telling me tonight that there is a problem going on, then I think we need to be, you know, briefed on at least what they can disclose. Because there's certain times where prosecuting attorney's office and KPD do not disclose to us, you know, so much detail because of privacy or what have you. But, you know, certainly, and like I said, I'm a father of two girls. They both live here on Kauai, one's married to a fireman. I have three granddaughters, four, three and one. And, you know, right now, they're, beside, I have two full-time jobs, one being a grandpa and one being a county council member. So I, I try to follow those jobs deeply, I try to do my best to make sure that I'm a better grandpa and a father. So, you know, going forward, you know, all of these problems that I hear, you know, that, that maybe exist in, I'll tackle them. You know, I don't, I don't run for many problems, and that's my job, you know, if I'm elected.
Thank you. Question to Errol?
Yeah, I do think sex trafficking is a serious issue. We actually just heard a presentation, Bernard was there too, for KEO, our employee banquet. They had someone come in and talk about it. And, you know, sex trafficking isn't what like I thought of it was. Like, I was thinking like the movie Taken where someone's like kidnapped, blindfolded, drugged, taken to some other place and then sold. It's actually happening in, here in, in the home, you know, and it's a very hidden thing where it can be as simple as someone taking, sending a picture to someone else for money or for services. And it can be even worse, you know, where it's, someone's doing things because their family's in financial burden, hardships or drug abuse or domestic violence. And as we all know, with technology and social media, it makes it even easier and more prevalent on island. The scary part for me, as I'm thinking about my daughters, was the main perpetrators, what is what they said was close family, close friends and boyfriends. And the most vulnerable were, I believe it was 15-year-olds, native. And the most vulnerable were, I believe it was fifteen-year-olds, native Hawaiian and homeless. And they said usually homeless, young homeless women out on their own will usually get solicited within like the first two days for some type of sexual activity for protection or something like that. And to me, it's super scary, you know, when I saw the statistics, I was thinking, okay, I guess my girls cannot date until they're over twenty years old, looking at the statistics. But, I mean, the hard truth is, it's a really hidden thing. It's not, it's not like the movies, it's something that can happen very easily where someone will send a picture that's inappropriate and, you know, so it's scary. For me, I think it was very eye-opening. And I think as a council member and people hearing it now, I think the best we can do is spread awareness to it, provide resources, maybe have those guys, the group that came in was Ho'ola Napua, that came in and did the presentation and just spread awareness.
Thank you. And Butch, the question is to you.
So sex trafficking is just, it's just one of the types of human trafficking, right? So we've had, we've had human trafficking on Kauai before. You know, we all raise our kids different, we try to protect them as much as we can, you know, without scaring them too much. But when my daughter was at, when my oldest, she's twenty in college now, but when she was at King Kamuili'i, some of her friends in fourth grade had, they had Instagram with thousands of followers, fourth graders, thousands of followers, because they were public Instagram profiles. We were up at Billy DeCosta's up in Ko'ke, and the girls all took a picture together. And the girl, one of the fourth grade girls posted that picture. And I just happened to look on the Instagram and I saw a comment. And it said, "You're very pretty," but it said, "Y O U apostrophe R E." Okay, what fourth grader puts Y O U apostrophe R E on a comment, right? I look at this person's profile, it's all like anime cartoons or something. So I look a little more, I see this person comments, "Do you go to King Kamuili'i?" No fourth grader at King K spells out Kamuili'i. So, I mean, this, this happens, and it's sixty-five percent online, it's twelve to fourteen-year-olds, it's family members, it's somebody close to the school, it's close to the home. So my brother-in-law actually works for a sex trafficking, human trafficking nonprofit in Georgia. And I follow this group called Thorn very closely because it's, they're using intelligence to basically grab our keke is what they're doing so.
Thank you. That's a tough, tough topic. Moving into the next one, Mel Reposo will be first, Bernard, then Fern. Domestic violence is the leading cause of houselessness among women. Yet the Kauai County Housing Agency no longer prioritizes victims of domestic violence for the Housing Choice Voucher Program. Safe housing is foundational to surviving violence, restoring households and achieving self-sufficiency. Survivors identify uncertainty about safe housing as their second highest concern behind only immediate physical safety. To Mel, do you believe domestic violence is a public health issue in need of community response? How will you address housing instability for victims of domestic violence and their children in our community specifically?
Well, yeah, I do believe it's a community crisis. And, you know, I think we gotta, as a county council, as a county in general, we gotta continue to support the agencies like the YWCA that provide those services, other agencies that provide safe houses. I mean, definitely, you know, there was a year that the budget was cut for the YWCA sexual assault hotline and the council reinstated the funding. I think we gotta rely on experts and the professional nonprofits out there that provide these services. I think people gotta understand that the county is not structured to provide the services, we're not. We are, we do public health and safety infrastructure, all of that stuff. But we do have the ability to leverage funds that we have, with state funds and federal funds, and make sure those funds get to the agencies, again, like the Y and others that provide these vital services to our women in need. And I think we gotta continue to do that and rely on the agencies that focus on these issues. Safe houses, I think, are critical. I think the shelter that the Y provides is, they were a savior to me while I was a cop in so many cases where these women had absolutely nowhere to go, nowhere to go. And the shelter was, was an easy way for us to get them to safety. And they still do that today. So yes, I think we continue to support the efforts that are being done by our nonprofit partners and making sure that our victims of family abuse are safe. I mean, I think that's just, that's a no-brainer.
Thank you. Bernard?
Yes, I totally agree that we need to continue to look wherever we can and whatever we can do to support this particular discussion, because, oh my goodness, violence in our women, yeah? And, you know, we did have a program in place that, working with our community, getting the community involved, like our churches, and I'm gonna say this. The mom with two children who is on her own in the car, she just needs one month because she needs more time and she doesn't have any place to go. So we worked with some of the churches where they can actually park their car at the church parking lot and have a safe place to stay for the night. I'm saying the community now can also give back. In addition to we as council members providing or looking at resources, what we have internally, and providing whatever support we can give back, whether it be vouchers or funding resources, whatever. But I'm saying there's opportunities within our community to help support. And we, the county, can help, like I said. If we can provide that voucher or a safe place for the mom with her two childrens to stay, and at the same time have restroom, entrance to restroom and be safe, that to me is stuff that we gotta look and programs that we need to look at overall. Because again, as you and I know, we have a lot of issues in our community. But at the same time, I think as council members and different levels of government, I think like Mel was saying, we just gotta bring home the resources and secure the resource and give it back. But again, it can't be done, we can't do it alone. So I look forward to, you know, working on stuff like this that will really affect our community and bring and keep everybody safe. And have hope that there is something available for our community to be part of and have resources available. So, thank you.
Thank you, Bernard. And Fern?
Lexi, can you reread the question?
Yes, of course. Do you want the intro as well or just the question sufficient? Okay. The question is, do you believe domestic violence is a public health issue in need of community response? How will you address housing instability for victims of domestic violence and their children in our community specifically?
Awesome, thank you. So the short answer to that is I do believe that that is a problem. I would support the safe housing program, absolutely all the programs that we see, KEO and YWCA, the nonprofits really working on this, I think ways that the county can fund and support programs that need to be continued, like was mentioned, or expanded upon. I think something that we can really do that will help to solve the problem long-term is go after the drug crisis. I think there's a connection between drugs, poverty, houselessness and the cycle of poverty that leads to an increase in domestic violence. So I absolutely think that taking on the drug problem head-on is a part of the solution to really addressing the increase in domestic violence. I think also coming with that, all the things that play into bettering our society, providing more programs, housing, livable wages, you know, all of this stuff. I think there's also a good opportunity for the county to lean into education, educating women in need about the opportunities that there are, about the programs that exist, about how to get that access. I think there's a place for our role to just be that connector to people that are in need, to connecting them to the services that they have. Absolutely support immediate options like safe parking in churches and places where there's security, there's a bathroom, there's basic needs, especially for, you know, women getting away from domestic abuse situations that have children that are in need of a safe place to go. It just puts things, you know, puts them in a worse position if they are then chased into the street, into a park that, you know, has even more dangerous situations for them and their children. So having safe spaces, absolutely. I think this is something that we can support across the board in different forms, it just needs to be prioritized.
Thank you. We'll wrap up the forum with closing remarks from each candidate. Each candidate will get two minutes. We will start with Bernard Carvalho and work our way down the line. Whenever you want to begin.
First of all, thank you so much to the status, I mean, to YWCA and our Xanta Club and everybody here for holding this opportunity for us to share our thoughts and ideas with you. Again, I really appreciate everybody being here. I appreciate the opportunity to share some of the thoughts and ideas that we have as council members and know that there's a commitment there to follow through and see what we can do to make sure that we provide whatever resources we can. The YWCA has done a lot, a lot in our community, and I really appreciate all the work that you've done. And for me, again, I look forward to serving another term as a council member. We bring to the table all these different ideas and understanding and resources and working closely with our fellow council members. But for tonight's forum, I really appreciate the questions that were posed to us because it really hits home in the home and bringing it out into the community and hearing what resources we can bring to the table. And know that with my background and understanding, I'm committed to working hard and getting out there and assuring that we provide whatever resources and making the connections that is important so we can continue to better serve our communities and most importantly, our families and our children and the women and the men, you know, all of that. And so just the opportunity to share that tonight and look forward to more opportunities in the future. So mahalo and aloha.
Thank you. Fern?
Mahalo, yes, so I echo the gratitude for this event. It's a wonderful opportunity and I always feel like the YWCA puts on such an important forum opportunity here. So thank you, everyone. You know, I was born and raised in Kapahai to a single mom who was a teacher. I grew up very much understanding the struggles that we all face in Kauai. I have lost so many friends, I have lost, you know, close, very close friends, siblings. I even lost a love of my life to an accidental fentanyl overdose. I completely understand the issues that our community faces around these tough topics. You know, as a woman that is, you know, moved home to try to serve my community, I worked three jobs at one point, over a hundred and five hours a week for two and a half years to be able to keep my home. I understand how hard it is to survive and I feel lucky that I was able to overcome a lot of those things. I really would love to serve in this capacity to help others overcome those things. I'm an extremely hardworking person, I will work hard for our community and I will work hard to try to deal with these tough issues that can be hard to take on. Work collaboratively with so many of our amazing colleagues, I think that we can get a lot done. I, you know, I invite you all to reach out at any point, I'm very accessible and you can find out more about me at votefern.com where I have more about my bio, my priorities, all my contact information, you're welcome to reach out at any time. I already respond to all kinds of things in the community as though I've been elected and I've never been elected. So I'm, you know, I'm here for you and I'm here for the service, whether I do or don't win this election. It's my second time running for county council. I'm really excited to be a very viable contender for one of the seven seats and I'm honored to be supported by so many people in our community. I really look forward to continuing to serve, whether this is in this capacity or in another. And I do humbly ask for one of your votes in this upcoming election on November fifth. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And Errol?
Yeah, I just wanna thank you for putting this on, those questions were super tough. I mean, I found myself getting chicken skin answering some of them. Did it like the three-sentence questions, those are probably the toughest. But, you know, I did just wanna finish off, you know, on that, on the sex trafficking question. The group that did the presentation for us was Ho'ola Napua, and they have a lot of resources. They provided crisis lines for anybody that might be trafficked or knows of people that might be trafficked or think someone might be getting trafficked. And they also have resources for healing, which I thought was also important too. And it was a word that Butch mentioned earlier. He said they really, in the healing process, they really try to provide self-worth back into these individuals that were sex trafficked. So as a little happier note, speaking of childcare, I did get to experience free childcare for a little while during COVID. Childcare Connection was providing payments for childcare. I loved it, it provided a whole lot, lot less stress on me. And so if the state is able to provide pre-K childcare, I think it'll be a great thing for everybody, for people to be able to go to work, for the financial burden to be off people's shoulders. And lastly, I just wanna humbly say, I hope I can earn your vote in this general election. I'm born and raised here, all of my core values are born here through my family, teachers, coaches. They're still over here watching me, holding me accountable for everything. So just humbly ask for your vote in this upcoming general election. With me, you'll see I'll provide homegrown sensibility. And I worked hard for you the eight years I was on and look forward to continuing to do so if I get in again. So, thank you.
Thank you. And Butch?
Yeah, thank you very much for this forum. And those, yeah, those three-minute questions were, or three-sentence questions were pretty tough.
I know, you guys were saying some run-on sentences, but it's fine.
Yeah.
We were good.
I said I was a math, I had a math degree, not an English, I wasn't an English major, okay? So, yeah, with that, I believe that I have like the, I don't know, my education, my experience, my life experience, my work experience, I'm fifty-six, I'm married, I've got daughters. You know, for the last thirty years, I've been serving the public. I've been a public servant for, since nineteen ninety-four when I started teaching at Kauai High. So as a firefighter, I, I, I mean, like as a police officer, it's the same. I mean, you, you, you're in people's homes, you're, it's talking about close to home. You see people at their worst, you also see people when you can help them or save them or bring them closure. So I'm aware of a lot of the issues, you know, like the wildfires we're having, you know, the search and rescues that we're having. That was a long meeting today at county council. These guys are in meetings all day today at county council. So, yeah, I just, I feel like we don't all have a voice sometimes. And we're all struggling in our own lives, whether it's, you know, trying to make ends meet or childcare or, you know, safe spaces. I'm hoping, both of my girls are in college right now, and I'm hoping that at one point, they can come home, right? And a lot of people that have moved away, including my parents, including a lot of my friends, I'm hoping they can come home too. So I hope I can do whatever's possible to make that happen. And that's my goal, and I'm just seeking your vote so I can make that happen.
Thank you. Mel?
I did wanna announce that Bart Thomas was supposed to be here tonight, and he texted me before. I'm not sure if we made an announcement, but he was at WMA ER, so sending prayers to Bart to recover from whatever he's having. You know, I was raised pretty much by my grandma, my grandpa, old Portuguese that was real strict. I never had to go to babysitters or daycare. And, you know, we just got back from Texas. My daughter is fortunate enough to be a stay-home mom because it's so doggone cheap in Texas that her boyfriend's income allows her to stay at home. And she's a fantastic mommy, I gotta tell you, I'm so proud. Sorry. She take after her mom. But why can't they do that here? That's why I do what I do. I've been a public servant since I was nineteen years old, I made sixty last month. And the reason I keep doing this and the reason I wanna continue to do it is because our kids should be able to do that here and not have to go to Texas. I kinda like Texas. But why do they have to go so far away to just raise their family and be good mommies? That's why I do what I do, that's why I continue to do what I do. That's why I want to continue and I need your help. You know, this year... All right, I think that's my signal.
No, no, no. You still have time. It's just the receiver, continue.
Damn, you lost my train of thought.
I'm sorry.
I was making the heart of it, you know?
I'm sorry.
I think you get my point.
It's the mommy.
I think you get my point. It's, it's not fair that our kids gotta move to live a life and not be able to enjoy the life that we were able to enjoy growing up. And yes, it's tough for this council, it's tough for any council because of resources. But like so many of us have said tonight, we gotta leverage our efforts and bang the drum loud so we get our partners to help. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. And last, Ross?
Thank you. You know, part of why I ran in two thousand and twelve was there was only nine candidates. So, you know, we had a good chance back then. And, you know, I met Mel during the campaign trail. And, you know, he was part of the reason why I ran, because I saw a lot of times when I felt like he was right on the topic, but he was losing the votes. he was right on the topic, but he was losing the votes. And, you know, I thought he spoke for like what I, what I valued as well, like local people, you know, struggling and, you know, how to, how to get this county to be accountable to the public, harder on tax money. And the county seems to be wasting, like, you know. Mel was one of my mentors when I got in. Today, we're still sitting next to each other. And, you know, we both have like similar, you know, values about, you know, like we've served a long time. Then people tell us, offer it. But, you know, you still feel you can help. And, you know, I think I owe it, you know, to myself as long as I told my wife I wasn't gonna do it. And I, you know, keep doing it. But, you know, I, I love her and I thank her for her support. And, you know, it's, it's not doing it for the money. You feel like you can really help and make sure that, you know, our future is brighter than it would be had I not been on. So, yeah, that's why I do it, you know what I mean? Like I said, I've coached youth soccer for girls like seven years, HISA and AYSO. I've coached girls basketball. My, my life, you know, revolves around sports pretty much. When people play at the golf course, they get issues. I'm the guy to call because I golf. If you get issues at the parks, I'm the guy to call. I play senior softball. I'm around every park. I'm around, you know, so Island Way, I'm, I'm the guy to call if you get park issues, definitely. Because I'm, I'm gonna follow up and I'm gonna make sure that whatever is fixed and is unreasonable, you know, toilet paper, what, you gonna see, next day, we'll get toilet paper. I'm gonna follow up.
Thank you. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, a round of applause for our candidates for this evening. We wanna send a big mahalo to our candidates, to you, the audience, for being here this evening and to our sponsors, our YWCA of Kauai, our Kauai Planning and Action Alliance, Zanta Club of Kauai, mahalo to KKCR and Hawike for broadcasting live and Rice Street Business Association for their koukua with sound. Now, please join us for the second night of the coun, excuse me, please join us for the second night of the candidate forums tomorrow night at 5:00 PM. We will be joined by Abraham Apilado Jr., Addison Bolasan, Felicia Cowden, Billy DaCosta and Kipukai Kuuli'i. As we conclude, we wanted to leave you with this closing thought. Tonight, we confronted many critical issues impacting women, children and our community. These constituents don't just want action, they need it, deserve it and are demanding it. Your voice, your vote is your voice. Make it count. That was fun. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you so much for being here tonight.
Oh, we're gonna take a group photo. So, stand in the front. We're gonna stand in the front. You guys were talking about tax. In front of the stage area? There is a building.
Are they gonna send it?
There is a building in Kauai. And it's empty. And it was made for vendors to be spouting horns. It's insane. For a feast. So, I told you. I answered. Look at that.